Here.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. Nine present, uh, citizens, Congress. Tracy, uh, Fawn Benz, please.
Hi, my name is Fawn Benz and I have a son that is in first grade at the primary center. It is very concerning to me, in this heat, there is no air conditioning in that room. Today I went in around one o'clock, dropped off some popsicles for the kids. The kids in the room were sweaty and looked totally exhausted. Two of the children even had their heads on their desk. My son loves school and loves his teacher, but he has been coming home complaining that he is so hot in school that his head hurts and he complains of being nauseated. There is no way that this is the best learning environment. This district makes it a point to strive for excellence and the children cannot perform to their best abilities in these conditions. I understand that fall is coming upon us, however. We all know in Pennsylvania that that does not mean it will be cool. The parents and the school district are to work together as a team. Parents are expected to make sure their children have enough rest, good nutrition, and complete assignments. So, can we please work together to come up with a solution to this problem? If not, I'll have no other choice than I will contact the Pennsylvania Department of Education and ask them their rules and guidelines on hazardous conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Benz. Captain Pike?
You might want to hold off on the stopwatch, Mike. I think you're gonna want to hear what I have to say. Yesterday, by invitation only, I had a two-hour meeting with Governor Tom Corbett and Secretary of Education Carolyn Dumeresk. The fundamental purpose of the meeting was to discuss the educational program in Pennsylvania with primary focus on the issue of Common Core, against which there is statewide rejection and demands to stop it. We discussed the Common Core standards, how they are implemented locally, their relationship to special education, the evaluation process including testing, reporting, and recommendations, the evaluation and bonuses for principals and teachers, college and workforce readiness, vocational education, early learning, and that's defined as grades K to three, and STEM. The group was very small. There were two physicians, one was a pediatrician, there was a businessman, a researcher, a retired teacher who taught for 35 years in the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and myself. Previous problems had been reported to the state. They're getting a lot of input about this. And parent feedback is, is one of the biggest issues they're dealing with. The first concern was timeliness of results. Parents say there's a long time that goes on between the time a kid takes a test and the time they get any information back about it. And the second complaint was the quality of those reports. Parents have stated that they, those reports are of no help whatsoever. They cannot tell where their child's performance lies, and they cannot tell if there is mastery of content compared to others. When they talked about the Common Core standards in Pennsylvania, you need to know that they are minimal, and Carolyn Dumeresk stresses this constantly, they are minimal. She said it's up to the school districts to do a better job than that. This was resoundingly rejected. We told her that when a person's job or their evaluation depends on somebody else's test scores, you're gonna teach exactly what's on that test to get the very best score. They discussed STEM, and for those of you who are not familiar with it, STEM is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. It is the very highest level of rigor to which we want our students to aspire. What the Department of Education is to do is they are to convene a group to establish criteria for college readiness. Remember, I told you, we have minimum standards, they do not include college readiness. We strongly recommended to her that they don't sit down with just a bunch of teachers or teacher training schools, but they should go to places like Carnegie Mellon University, University of Pennsylvania, Drexel, top-notch schools and people in the area to really find out from them what it takes for kids to come out of high school ready to go into Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. The results of that are then to go to the State Board. They then discussed scope and rigor of Common Core, and I was surprised at what a major concern this turned out to be in regard to why we need to pay more attention to what is happening in early learning K to three. There was tremendous criticism of kindergarten programs in which a child is demanded to learn at levels far beyond normal cognitive development. Instead of bragging about our kids can read 25 books and write a paragraph in kindergarten, they recommend that you use research data, for example, PIGA, about what is appropriate for children at that age. There was concern that pushing children at this age may result in long-term resentment of school and learning. There was particular concern about how K to three kids are taught math. In math, two plus two is four. Well then, the next question they are asked is, "How did you come to this conclusion?" And the government, the governor himself stood up and said, "The answer should be, because I know it." These drawings that, that are required for math are considered very deleterious to their development.
Thirty seconds.
Mike, we can't, I mean, I think this is something that everybody should hear coming from the governor. I mean, I think that's something unique and extraordinary that we had a chance to have somebody in our community talk to the governor. We can't give her any more time?
We're following board policy unless...
We didn't follow board policy when the solicitor spent 20 minutes to explain his salary as a citizen, since he didn't have any right to speak that night, and you let him go on because Gail asked, and she wanted to hear what he had to say. I'd like to hear what Dr. Feig has to say.
Are there five minutes that you want to go against the policy? Is this going to be a pair of board presidents? Minutes.
Nice question, Mike. Um, I picked up the fight request to have a longer period of time at another meeting. We can, again, allow her more than the five minutes that she's allotted. Are we allowed to do that?
No. Do it right now.
Five minutes. Well, here, I'll make a motion. Is that what you need, a motion?
There's a ruling from the chair, so if you want to make a motion to suspend the rules to permit the person to speak longer, that can be done, and that would require about six people.
Why six?
Because that's what the motion to suspend the rules is.
Okay. I make a motion to suspend the rules so that we may listen to what Dr. Feig's meeting with Governor Corbett was about.
We have a second?
I'll second, okay.
Second, Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
No.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Polakowski?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
No.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
No. That's three, positive, and six negatives, the motion failed. Mr. Miller?
Yes. I would welcome a written, a further written statement by, by, something of the nature here of which, Mr. Alt, given it's here, but I would welcome more information right now. So, let's work.
Mike, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Could, since this was obviously a meeting that included the education and things like that, could our superintendent write to them and ask for transcript of that meeting? Because I think, obviously, there are some things that were said at a meeting that need to be passed along to school districts, and I would like to have, I think, an official transcript of that meeting, something that would be very, very impressive to have.
I couldn't agree more with that, and that's, I think, a written, yeah, good.
Having said that, Levi, wouldn't it have been just as easy to hear from the horse's mouth? She was here at a meeting. You know, I'm not looking for a reply. That's just how silly this whole thing is, to vote no, to listen to something that important. You all should be ashamed of yourselves.
And while we're on the topic of things written, Dr. Feig also brought some envelopes in for each board member and the business manager to be distributed. So Peggy has those, you can pick those up at the end of the meeting. I'm not sure what the content of the envelopes are, but they're here. I'll have to tell to you, sir. We'll be in our meetings.
Later. At the end of the meeting.
Mr. Kefler? Come on. You need to state the...
My address.
Six two eight Homestead Avenue. I'm, I was interested in what Dr. Feig said, and I would just like to, as we've done here over the years, grant her my five minutes. No. No. Thank you. She's not here.
Well, I think she's out in the home.
No.
Would you do that?
I think it says for each person. Um...
I, I think it's, you know, it's limited to the individual person, rather than a bunch of people coming in and reserving time and then giving it to one person.
Thank you. Minutes? All right, you'll be asked next week to approve the minutes of the August 7 and August 14 board meeting. Any questions or comments on that? Finance? You'll also be asked to put the tranches in support of bills payable in the month of August. Any questions or comments on that? All right, discussion, old business? Under old business, there's a item that did not make it onto the agenda that I wanted to share with you. I had a conversation with Mayor Chuck King on Tuesday afternoon. He, Chuck also is an employee of Scottsdale Banking Trust, and he shared some information with me about the Eagles building, and he asked if the board reconsider exonerating more than 35 percent of the delinquent taxes that we had already voted to exonerate. And I wanted to just give you the information that he gave me. Scottsdale Banking Trust does hold the mortgage on that building. The local Eagles chapter did disband and just walked away from their mortgage obligation at that time because they had no money to pay it. So Scottsdale Banking Trust is owed approximately $46,000 on the building. Scottsdale Banking Trust is willing to forgive some of the outstanding interest and latent fees if and when the property is purchased. They're also willing to make a new loan on the property, and they're willing to give some concessions to the new borrower. The building, for those of you who don't know, and we know it's in disrepair, but it's also been condemned, so therefore it's currently uninsurable. There's a lien against the building. The vending company that supplied beverages and so forth to the Eagles has a lien on the company, on, on the property, as does the borough of Scottsdale. Demolition costs for the building are about $50,000. If they find asbestos, demolition cost will be about $90,000. The potential buyer is not interested in paying delinquent taxes on the property. He feels that those taxes are the responsibility of the previous owner and not his, and that's why they're asking for the exoneration. The borough has already exonerated 100 percent of the taxes, provided that the building is demolished within six months of closing. The county has not formally exonerated taxes, but the general consensus and feeling is that they'll follow the borough's lead. Currently, we're collecting no taxes on the property. There is a potential buyer for the property, and the potential buyer has plans to use the land for a parking lot, which would put it back onto the tax rolls. If it is not sold, it would still remain in arrears in terms of taxing, and if it were to go into the repository of the land bank, we would still collect no taxes whatsoever on it moving forward. If it goes into the repository, someone might buy it for a very small sum of money, and then it would become a taxable property. Again, as I understand it, if it goes into the land bank and is sold as part of the blighted property program of the land bank, we would receive, after, after the deal is closed, we would receive 50 percent of taxes on, on whatever that property would be worth after the building's been demolished, as opposed to the 100 percent we would receive moving forward here. Currently, school taxes owed, including penalties and all those things, $5,535.58. So I told Mr. King that I would share that information with you, so could open the floor for discussion at this time.
What is owed to the bank, Dr. Moll?
$46,000.
What kind of money will it generate as a parking lot as opposed to nothing?
I, I don't know what the assessment would be on that.
We don't have any idea what, I mean, there's no money being made with a parking lot, so what would generate the income?
I, I don't, I don't know what the assessment would be, just like when we sold the administration building, we had no way of knowing what the new assessment would be until the assessor came out.
You actually had a building on the property.
Understood.
Vacant land property brings in virtually nothing. So we're going to...
Yeah, and again, I, I don't know what it would be a...
Give up taxes owed to get basically nothing back with an empty property.
This parking lot, is it supposed to be for a business or private individual?
Yes.
Private individual? There's not gonna be a business parking lot there?
It's, it's gonna be a business individual that...
Then he'd have to pay tax on it, right?
Correct.
I mean, it, we're, we're still gonna get something off, though, which we're not getting now.
Yeah, but what doesn't make sense to me is, why spend $100,000 to have a parking lot that's not gonna make you any money? Something doesn't make sense there. You know, are, do we know all the facts before we're doing anything? Because I know I wouldn't spend money to have an empty lot.
I am told the individual needs parking for his business.
What individual? Chuck King?
No, it's not Chuck King.
No. What's Chuck King have to do with it?
Well, he's the mayor, and he also is one of the loan officers at the bank.
So we really don't know what's gonna be done with that property?
It's, it's going to be a parking lot, that's the plan.
Short range or long range?
I just know what I'm told, Ken. I, I don't, I would assume long range.
I think before we do anything and give any money away, we need to know what exactly we're giving up.
Yes, sir.
Basically, they're basically telling us that they won't do anything unless we give up $5,500.
Right. I, I, my understanding is...
And they're willing to invest money to demolish the building, buy the property, get a new mortgage, but the $5,500 that they'd have to pay us is gonna be a deal breaker for them.
That's what I'm told.
Okay.
I'm gonna buy the...
It's 35 percent less than $5,500 we gave them.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
I agree with you.
It's like, you know, I don't blame them for asking. I mean, I'd ask too if it was me, but, but that doesn't mean we have to give in. And, and again, they didn't come with a counter. I guess unless their counter was, it's either give us all of it, or we won't buy the property. If that's what they're saying, then I guess we'll have to make a decision, but...
I'm just thinking of, I, you make a good point. I mean, I, I see the, you mean, the numbers, the 55 and the $50,000, 50 to 90. On the other hand, I drive by there about every day or so. That, it's, it's, it's a blight. It's, it's a blighted building. We're not gaining anything from it. The borough is our neighbor. We're partners together, and we've worked together with the borough, so they're coming with a proposal. The businesses are our neighbors. We want them to prosper. We want them to prosper to get ta, to, to taxes, to have a thriving community. Yeah, I'm just, the, the bank is our neighbor and has been a good neighbor. I, I could think of so many reasons why, you know, I, I, I understand, you know, I mean, well, if somebody may say, okay, there's a principle involved here, and maybe there is, but I, on a practical, neighborly level, it seems to me we should, we should try to make this work, do anything that we can, do what we can, and it seems like a fairly small step that we would need to take to try to make this work, to have a, have a healthier borough, what I would view a healthier environment, a healthier financial, cultural environment in our borough.
I agree, Levi.
So that, that's, I, you know, Bob, that's probably...
Except that this new owner is also our neighbor, and he's also basically saying to us, "As a neighbor, I want you to forgive everything before I proceed as a good neighbor." Again, it's not like we had said, "We're not gonna forgive any of the taxes." We went in with an offer. Their counter was all or nothing. At least, that's what it appears to be. And if they're a good neighbor, as we're trying to be good neighbors, wouldn't they want to help their school district and say, "You know what? All right, we'll pay a little bit of those taxes because we're gonna be making money, supposedly, otherwise, why are they buying it?" I mean, I'm assuming they're in this for profit, so, again, I, I agree with you. We should all be good neighbors. That would also be part of what I would expect from the new owner, be a good neighbor, pay a little bit of the taxes. One of the things you might want to keep in mind, too, is what is the big secret? If you remember a few years ago, and I don't know if that would be mind-pleasing or what, somebody wanted to buy some property over there, and they managed to get it, and then they wanted to put a porn shop in. I mean, do we want to be, I, that's not going to happen, I'm sure, but we need to know what it is that we're forgiving and we were forgiving. I mean, it's, it's, Levi's absolutely right. It's good policy, but what's the secret?
I don't think there's a secret. They're gonna put a parking lot.
Who is it? What's it gonna be? I can't believe that somebody's gonna put a parking lot in and not make money and spend $100,000. That, I can't grasp that concept, Jack. You know, to spend $100,000 for a parking lot that generates the money, what is the deal?
Where, there's something a little confusing in my mind.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna create the public announcement, you know, who the potential buyer, the lots, what, who can do that.
Okay, fine. The, the $100,000 is where, are, they're forgiving all the money that's owed on that building? The bank? The 46...
No. No, they're not forgiving. They're not forgiving anything.
They're forgiving some of the fees that they're just, you know. And they're not forgiving, they're willing to remortgage, move the concessions also.
And the taxes owed on here is $5,535.
Right.
I think, on the bottom line, is, this building's been sitting there and sitting there if we don't make a gesture. And myself, I'm not happy about having to take it again where we forgive the taxes and, and not get anything right up front for the effort, but that, how long is this building gonna sit there if we don't make, if we don't cooperate, if we don't take the steps? The building could sit there for how much longer, and it'll be a longer period of time where we're not getting anything. So I agree with Levi. I think we ought to be a good neighbor and move forward with this. Am I happy about forgiving the taxes? No. I don't know whether they would be interested maybe in paying a small portion of it, as, as Bob said, you know, being a good neighbor on their part, but I think we ought to move forward with it and not have that blighted building sitting there where we're not getting anything, and it might be a lo, lot longer that we're not getting anything. So that's, that's my view on this.
I just have a question. So let me, let me clarify. We already gave them 30, we, I mean, we're talking about 35 percent discount, which, you know, so what we're talking about here is 35, around $3,500. So up or down, we're talking about $3,500.
I can answer that too, Charlie.
Yeah, oh, I'm, I know. I mean, I'm just saying that in my na, in my, in my own, I'm thinking that in my own mind. I'm trying to figure that out.
There's only one thing that bothers me about that building sitting there. One of our students, her young child in town, gets into that building over $3,500, and something would happen. They get hurt, something happens to them, and here we're sitting arguing, what is a life worth? $3,500? Or, you know, it could be one of our students because of the fact he's been sitting there so long that, you know how kids are, you know, even adults want to see what's inside, and something happens, here we sit, how do we feel then for $3,500? That's all I have to say.
Any other questions or comments?
I think that we have to act as responsible board and not give our money away. I think that 35 percent was a more than fair offer, and I think we need to stand by it.
Is there interest in having it on the agenda next week, or...
I, I think you have to have it together to find out what we're gonna do, one way or the other, right?
Do you want to come up with a figure now, or a thought that I have is, ask Dr. Molnar if Chuck King would be interested in coming in, meeting with the board, you may request executive session if it's, if there are not questions, or if you don't think that's gonna do any good to change your mind, then you won't bother with that?
I don't think it's gonna qualify for executive session.
He's not gonna be able to say anything because it's private.
Either way, is that, will it interest you, or is that, is that of interest to you? If it's not gonna sway your decision, then we won't bother with that.
I'd say if he's coming in with the idea that it's gonna be all or nothing, yeah, I'm not interested in him coming in if, if he's already got his mindset that if we don't give all of the tax forgiveness, that he's not gonna come up with another figure, and I'd say it's a waste of time, because we've already made a proposal, and he's basically said, he didn't counter-proposed, he said, "I'm coming back with the same one, exonerate all the taxes." That's what he said.
Everyone have their side of those, anyway?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it the way it is, 35 percent.
No one's interested in like 50 percent, half and half? That would be halfway.
Half.
Sir, interested in that being on the agenda next week?
I just think that we could nickel and dime this forever. I think if you, we want to put it on the agenda next week to vote it up or vote it down if people wants to have, want to have a say in it, but I think to keep, duh, 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 we could go on for months. That's ridiculous.
Let me just, just to, I, yeah, this is just to, I, Chuck King has not been out giving ultimatums on this, it is, I'll be, I'll be open here, I talked to him too. No one is giving anyone ultimatums here, so whether, whether we go with it one way or another, it's, and, I mean, just to be a little, what does it mean to make an investment? I'll, I'll give you an example of a tax abatement, and, 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 Shipley, you may remember this. East Huntington Township, when Walmart, the land developer there, that, the vote was eight to one in giving a tax abatement to the land. What does that mean? We gave up taxes. I voted against it because I wanted to support the downtown, and, and I'm, my, intuitively, I'm, I prefer small businesses to big, okay? But I totally understand why that vote went, and why, in terms of the financial well-being of having sewage in East Huntington Township, why it went that direction. The school district, along with some other taxing body, made an investment, and, and my good friend, Bill Porter, would hear, he would say, "You simply disagreed on principle of what was actually a good investment." That was in the mid... That was in the mid-'90s. Now, we can disagree or disagree, but I, this is peanuts, in terms of the amount, and to me, it is a good investment. Anything, rather than nothing, and anything aesthetically, culturally, economically, is a good investment, versus a decaying building that if our kids go down there to the theater and wander over there, or anything like that, could hurt someone. That's, that's...
So put it on the agenda for 50%? Or vote it up or down? And also, is there interest in Chuck King coming or not?
But if you put it on the agenda for 50%, and we vote down 50%, does that mean it's back to 35%? I mean, if you put it on the agenda, either we leave it the way it is, or we don't agree with it, then one vote's going to take it.
Or honor what the borough is doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Exonerated.
So we need some direction for the agenda for next week?
I make a motion that, on the agenda next week, we vote up or down the 35% that we've had. Either we vote to retain the 35% exoneration we've given them, or we vote to give them 100% exoneration.
And if we need a second on that, I agree.
Is there agreement with that? Vote up or down? Is there interest in Chuck King coming in, in case he has the ability to give us more information?
I would recommend, for factual purposes, that you have Dr. Molnar contact the borough and find out what it will cost the taxpayers, the borough, if, the borough has to tear down the building, rather than getting it done as part of this project, if anything. It may be a significant number, it may not be, but it might be a piece of information that would have some bearing on your thought processes.
I would assume if they tore it down, it wouldn't be a burden on, it wouldn't be as much, if any, tax to us.
Well, there'll be vacant lot at that point.
Again, and just to reiterate, does it always come down to, we have to say uncle? I mean, again, it's not just principle, it's just that every time somebody has an issue, again, when we've dealt with Walmart, and, and, again, it's always the school board and those that pay school taxes have to say uncle, and they have to give in, because it's a good neighborly thing to do. It reaches a point in time where you say, you know what? There's good neighbors both ways. Those that are asking for something, and those that are giving something. But we're going to vote it up or down. If we had a second on that, then let's just be done with this.
Well, we can't vote tonight.
No, I know. Just a motion, put it on the...
Go with what you're saying.
Either vote it up or down. Okay, that's all we're asked, the motion to put it on the agenda.
But just to piggyback on what you were saying, I sort of feel that, all these times being on the board, that I've been on the board, there's so many times where we have to give in, as you're saying, but there's no light at the end of the tunnel, or no benefit, or at least this time, if we do give in, there's the benefit of betterment for the borough, betterment for the business community, and betterment for, at least, we'll start getting some taxes. So, at least this time, I feel if we do give in, then there's at least a benefit, as opposed to, we have a tax appeal, and we're losing $100,000, we have a tax appeal, we're losing $20,000, and our hands are always tied, as opposed to, at least this time, there is some kind of light at the end of the tunnel. So, we'll put it on the agenda, or?
Put it on.
35%. 35% or 100%? To answer your question, the estimate that they got from the demolition guy, $50,000, unless they find asbestos, $90,000.
Well, that's if the purchaser does it. My question is, if there is no purchase, because it's a condemned building, and ultimately the borough may have to seek either tax funds or a grant to tear it down, you know, what's the, what, what are the implications of that? You know, if the borough has to be tear it down, is it just going to be costing local taxpayers, you know, $90,000 to tear it down, instead of having the private person do it? That's my...
I'll call Mr. Polo.
And you're the judges of that, not me. I just want you to have the information, so you get a bigger picture. I would presume it'd be the same amount, Dave, whether the private person or the borough are tearing it down, it'd probably be close to the same figures to tear it down.
Sometimes they can get some grant money.
Yeah, but again, it's still going to be probably a sizable chunk of money.
Right. New business, St. Vincent Prevention? Yeah, every year we have a St. Vincent Prevention Project, work with our students, they work on drug, alcohol, and tobacco prevention and safety. They also provide a crisis counselor, and do some work on behavioring, behavior bullying. So we would ask to approve the renewal of their contract for the forthcoming year, and that is going to cost $26,425. And I, but I might as well ask for you on the contract that they sent.
Jack, is there somewhere in here that it says $1,200 or $1,000? I read this the other day. I can't find it off the top of my head, where it mentions the...
Oh, that was, I believe you're thinking about maybe last month, when we matched the amount that we get from the county drug and alcohol people. It's always, it's always a two-brow process. They come about a month apart. I get that question every year, Ken. It's a good question, then. Any more questions or comments on that? New business? The last item I have, you know, new business, and I sent you this information, we just missed it when we put it on the agenda. There's a property, 612 Garfield Avenue, that has been up for share sale on a couple of occasions, and it's not sold. So there's a free and clear sale through the Tax Plan Bureau, and the bid on the property was $600. And the law requires the written consent of each taxing district where the property is located prior to the sale. And no district may have a reasonable consent to the sale of the property. And if we don't do anything, by August, within 40 days of August 15th, we had implied consent, and they sell the building anyway. And I did include a picture of the building there, and it was sold for $600. So we'll put that on the agenda, with your approval, for Black Arrow next week as well. Citizens' comments?
Mike, before you do that, I wanted to bring up under new business. I gave everybody a copy. There are some questions I'd like to see placed on the agenda, so that we start addressing them now, as opposed to waiting till the last minute. So, that was the handout that I gave everybody. I'd like to see us start addressing those questions, and go forward and get those things taken care of. Or answered.
We can work on those answers while you can.
Okay.
Citizens' comments? Anywhere there, board members? Before we go to executive session, I just wanted to, I got a letter today from PSBA about the registered votes for PSBA officer elections. It used to be, prior to last year, that, when you went to the convention in Hershey, everyone that attended voted for the officers, but they changed it last year. Last year, each school district gets one vote for each position. Just to let everyone know, so that we can discuss it next week, because you have to vote by October 6th, and we will not have a voting meeting before October 6th, except for next week. So we can discuss it next week, who we want to vote for. If you go to www.pspad.org/elections, you can see a list of the candidates, and their bio, they actually have a short video there to explain information about themselves. Basically, we're voting for president-elect, there's two people. Vice president, there's just one, so it's pretty much taken care of very seriously the same way. And the at-large representative for Westmoreland, Pennsylvania, Western Pennsylvania, there's just one person, so it's basically just two people up for president-elect. So if you have time this week, go ahead and look at that information, so we can discuss that next week and vote on that, so we can get that taken care of.
Mike, I do have one more question, Mrs. Hoggins. I see that we're no longer allowed to sell popcorn at the Puppy Pond, which was a huge generator of revenue for, for them, and, I mean, isn't there healthy popcorn we can use as a substitute, or? And my second question would be, if we decide to run our Puppy Pond the way we want to run our Puppy Pond, what are the ramifications? I mean, who's going to come down and whip us into submission on popcorn?
As far as the healthy popcorn, there are products that are available that are not, they're processed products, so there are products available that they could purchase that would be popcorn, just not pop. The reason it doesn't fit is that the percentage of fat, when they use the oil-based or vegetable oil-based oil, and popping popcorn, the fat is just too high percentage to qualify. But there, they can sell items that meet the guidelines, and the principals also have a little bit of leeway for doing some exemptions for fundraisers. So I'm working with Mr. Lee on some items for Puppy Pound, and met with Mr. Mashah today to discuss some items, so. As far as ramifications, there are no monetary ramifications, but it will show up when they do administrative reviews, when PDE comes out. They expect a good faith effort. I'm not sure what USDA will do in the future for schools that aren't following or meeting the guidelines, but they, right now, they expect a good faith effort to follow the guidelines.
So in essence, somebody's telling us what they think is best for us, and...
It's, it's not just us, it's anyone who's on the, any school district that's on the National School Lunch Program.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying by somebody, somebody that obviously doesn't like popcorn, thinks it's not wise to eat popcorn, when we feed them donuts in the morning, and other greasy, fatty foods throughout the day, but we can't sell them popcorn.
It affects all foods.
What's that?
Yeah.
We most certainly do, do we not?
No.
We don't feed them any pastries at all.
No. Not now. And, and, as I explain even to parents, when I talk to them for orientations, that you may see something on the menu that looks like a pastry, but chances are, it's a whole grain product that meets certain fat specifications. So, a chicken nugget isn't a chicken nugget like you would see in a fast food place, it's going to have whole grain breading, and it's going to meet certain specifications for what we buy. But as far as what we serve, we also, anyone selling food to children outside of the school meals program has to meet the same requirements. And if you note on my report, I noticed that two items that we sold last year is going to cost us $50,000 in à la carte sales this year. So we're looking also to find things in our department that we can meet the new, new guidelines.
What I'd really, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just real quick. Lynn, is there, since this obviously just changes every place, is there any kind of a commercial or a larger air popcorn, air pauper that we can get? Because I would imagine it's the fats in the popcorn.
Yes, yes. And the sodium, too.
Yeah, the sodium. So, I mean, is there, is there something which, is there anything like that that we could look into?
It's very possible. It's, we're just in the starting to talking phases, and to be honest with you, I'm looking for things that our department can sell, and for me to now have to try to help all the fundraising groups is difficult, but I'll, I'll be willing to work with them, try to find things.
It's across the board.
Right. Right.
You know what? We're talking a lot of money here. And for once, I'd like to see this board actually go out on a limb and do something, and say to those in charge, you know what? We're going to do what we want to do in our school district, what we think is best. But of course, I know that's not going to happen, but whatever, because we still keep throwing the green beans away that I keep bringing up. We're being made to feed these kids stuff that they do not and will not eat, and it's all going in the garbage can.
That's a complaint that you see nationally.
Yeah, and there are school districts in, in big areas all over the country that have said to the federal government, we'll run our school district. You stay out of it.
They're going off the program, but it's because they can afford to go on the, off the program, in wealthier areas where the free and reduced percent is maybe 10%, they can afford to go off the program, but, for example, our free and reduced percent is close to 50%. If we go off that program, we've got to find a way to feed those kids and pay for it.
I don't know, Lynn, the way we spend money in this district, I think we have it. Thank you.
Is that applied to the football games and soccer matches?
It only applies to foods sold to students during the school day, so that goes up to 30 minutes after school until midnight. I'm, I'm sorry, yes. From midnight till 30 minutes at the end of the school day, anything sold to kids. But anything after school is fine.
Is there a cutoff here? In other words, we're saying we can no longer do that, or is this something that we have that, within two months or a month, we have to stop doing that? Reason I'm asking that is because I'm wondering, a lot of times, we substitute things, and then we simply buy all of that, and then we find the substitute the kids didn't like.
Right.
What I'm thinking here is, can we find a substitute that we could sell a small quantity of, and make sure it's not going to all go in the garbage can, or they're not going to buy it? When you're talking about the popcorn, if you were to put air popcorn against the popcorn we're selling, and the air popcorn doesn't sell, that's better than cutting out the oil popcorn, and then saying, we're just going to sell air popcorn. Why bother buying it?
Exactly. We've, we have the same issue in our department with things that we, we've tried to...
So you do test them out to make sure that we're not buying into a whole new food group that they're not fit anyway?
Yes, but as far as the fundraising groups, we, our department has no control over that. They, they buy what they want to sell and what they know will sell, so we really don't mesh with the fundraising groups. But with our department, we, you know, we try to buy small quantities, and we've had things that, that bombed, so.
If you guys don't mesh with the fundraising, then why does them buying popcorn make a difference to you?
It's, it doesn't make a difference to me. I'm just, I'm the one who's supposed to convey the standards that came down from USDA. So the standards that apply to all foods sold throughout the school day came from USDA. They funnel the information through me, I funnel it down to the fundraising groups. So, I'm not the policeman here, I'm, as Dr. Molnar said the other day, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just the one relaying the information of what is expected. Because what will happen, when PDE comes in to review, they review my department, and if they find something going on with fundraising, that will show up in, on the food service department review, even though it's going on somewhere else in the, in the school.
Can I just make one other comment? I'm actually on some of those USDA boards, and, and the whole concept is that, during the school day, the children are considered a captive audience, and having choices. And so, who, it doesn't matter who sells the food in the school, it's part of the school, and the kids are, the kids are here, and that's, that's where a lot of that comes from.
It has to do with, it has to do with the, selling the food. You can, we can give them anything, so it doesn't affect school parties, it doesn't affect reward events that the schools may have, their gems and things like that, and only affects things that are sold.
Lynn, who made the choice? If, if you're not, as you say, the school police, then who made the decision not to sell the popcorn?
Well, I made them aware of the guidelines, and they asked me to analyze what they were selling. So I, there was a specific place where you check the, you analyze the products, and I just let them know that it didn't, it didn't fit.
But if they choose to, they could do it.
They could do it. I can't do anything about it.
Okay.
If, generally, we try to follow the government regulations we're given. Call by...
I mean, we're not, like I said, we're not happy about it either, and, you know, we know that the students aren't happy with certain things that we're selling this year, and I'll give you an example. I can sell a diet soda, but I can't sell them a carton of organic almond milk. Does that make sense? No. Makes no sense.
We all, I see the same...
But I'm just saying, compare the two. I'm, I could sell a, a diet national brand soft drink, but I couldn't sell an eight-ounce container of organic almond milk, because it has too many calories, and it's not considered equivalent to whole milk. So, I mean, there's a lot of crazy things with these new, new guidelines, that, you know, a lot of us don't find that they don't make sense.
Maybe, for next month, to bring a proposed, kind of a statement that we'd send to the, to the agriculture department, or whether the, as I understand, this is being reviewed. I mean, you see the same news, this is going to be quite a bit of pushback on the degree to which the guidelines are too, are too strict, I mean, are too, I mean, in, too narrow in regards to tastes versus what is viewed as nutritional value versus youth... viewed as nutritional value versus youth and children's taste. So, I think for us to feed into that, I mean, some are going to the extent of going their own way financially. I don't...I'm not at that point, but I certainly agree with Mr. Alt's concern here that probably we've moved too far in the direction of having a centralized control of our diet.
One way to do this is contacting USDA. I can provide contacts for that. And the other way would be through your United States Representatives. They're the people who voted the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act and which the President signed in 2010. So, this has been regulations coming, putting in piecemeal since that happened.
No, I realize that. We can as citizens and as board members, but I just...I just thought there may be some value in us as a board having a paragraph which you would help draft and bring it here for a discussion session and send it to both the state and to the federal officials in regards to our...how it impacts us here at Southmoreland. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn to personnel? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Seven Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
...